I'm Bob Ryan, CEO of Henry Ford Health. When it comes to caring for you, we go for it. Extending services to the 50,000 hospitals in Southeast Michigan and the greater Flint area. Fifty thousand team members surrounding you with what you need for the primary care, preventative health, or the most complex care, we go for it. It's who we are. We are Henry Ford. Visit HenryFord.com for more.
It's not just a warm blanket. It's a bottle of clean water. It's a room and a bed. Please donate now to help people affect the 2025 California wildfires.
Go to redcross.org.
Lays up your skates for winter fun. At the rink at Kansas Marshes Park in the heart of Detroit. Glide under the dazzling city lights. Enjoy hot cocoa and festive treats and create unforgettable memories. Visit the rink at Kansas Marshes Park for a truly magical winter experience. Open seven days a week through March 2nd.
This is the great voice of the great lakes. WJR AM and WDDH D2 Detroit.
For now, I'm Lisa Lucera, Fox News. The US and Canada have agreed to pause and propose tariffs against each other. In a great chat, President Trump spoke by phone with Canadian Prime Minister Justin Trudeau. President Trump posting on Truth Social that Canada has agreed to
Welcome to the Charter Township of Brownstown meeting of February 3rd. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Clerk Brinker, may we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Breeze?
Here.
Clerk Brinker here. Treasurer Eberth?
Here.
Trustee Allen?
Here.
Trustee Chapman?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
And Trustee Killian?
Here.
Okay, please bear with us. This is our first night with our laptops and we're all kind of befuddled, we'll say. At this time, I would like to have a motion for, if you'd wish, the work session, regular board meeting. If not, if you want to do it individually, so be it.
Motion to approve the regular work session, meeting of January 21st, 2023-25, and the regular board meeting minutes of January 21st, 2025.
Motion by Eberth, supported by Chapman, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, I would like a motion, please, for an agenda approval.
So move.
Support.
Support.
Motion by Allen, support by Eberth, any discussion?
Through the chair, I just wanted to make one correction on the agenda. Where items one and two, where it says the taco stand, it should say the Taco Company. All the other paperwork that goes with those does say Taco Company. It was just our error and we put Taco Stand, but it is supposed to be the Taco Company.
I renew my motion with that change.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
No problem at all, I'm sorry.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Public forum, if you'd like to address the board, we have three minutes to do so. Please join us up front and give us your name and address. Seeing none, the first agenda on the, or the first item on the agenda is consideration of liquor license application for the Taco Company?
Motion to table for lack of, I need more information.
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Allen, to table, all those in all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item number two.
I guess I should have said in discussion, what?
You can't discuss, okay, oh table, sorry.
That's okay, just we got to get that information.
Right, I'm sorry. Item number two, resolution for the 2025-3 local ordinance approval of the liquor license application for the Taco Company?
Motion to table for more information.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is the Sorry.
Number three.
Yes, I know, I'm just trying to catch up with my computer, sorry. Item number three is the memorandum of agreement to guide the usage and purpose of partners for Downriver Linked Greenways, D L G, trail projects in collaboration with the Friends of the Detroit River.
Support.
Any discussion?
Through the chair to our, maybe our manager or the attorney. Haven't we had this before? Is this the first time we've seen this kind of agreement?
We have had prior agreements. I'm not sure if this is the same or not, but there's actually a representative here from Downriver Linked Greenways. If you'd like to come up and describe what this is.
Sure.
Thank you, I was going to ask him.
All right, thank you for having me here today, everybody. My name's Eric Anzalak and I'm the Trail Program Manager for Downriver Linked Greenways. To answer your question, we do have an agreement from 2021 that was very project specific to the engineering and design of a large trail system called the Ironbell Trail going through 10 different communities in Downriver. This agreement is kind of to renew everything and make it a little bit project specific. With Downriver Linked Greenways, we run programs. I'm the first dedicated full-time employee of the organization, so we hope to expand on those things. And then as we continue to develop projects, we just wanted to make sure that there was definitive language around like long-term maintenance and understanding that Downriver Linked Greenways doesn't own any infrastructure and that that would be with the municipality or township.
And if I may, and then how do we know, is there communication as far as maintenance? Is it you're communicating with us that we've inspected it and next you got to replace some planks? And is that how it's going to work, some sort of communication?
Yeah, yeah, generally speaking, it'll be just some sort of communication. I frequently use the trails to keep an eye on all these things. And then our main objective too, for what it's worth, is if you ever wanted to expand trail systems or feel like, hey, this might be a great addition to our township, we help with securing funding to be able to get the resources and then carry out the project.
So if we wanted to add like a separate trail that loops around a little bit and connects back up?
Yeah.
We could work with you to find funding for that.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
Yep, not a problem, any other questions?
Other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number four is the resolution for the 2025-04 to approve a memorandum of agreement to guide the usage and purpose of partnership for Downriver Linked Greenways, trail projects in collaboration with the Friends of the Detroit River for the enhancement of the D L G in the Charter Township of Brownstown. Repeat that, please.
So moved.
Motion by Allen, supported by Chapman, any questions? All those in favor sign. Roll call, please.
Brinker, yes. Jones?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. Someone does have his contact information, right, Mr. Peters?
Yes, we have it.
Okay, thank you. Next item is the SEMCOG Annual Membership Due for 2025 in the amount of $5,400, $5,043.
Motion to approve.
Support. Chapman? Any discussion? Motion by Killian, supported by Chapman, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the supervisors' report. Number one is to approve appointments to the Township officials' Brownstown Compensation Commission.
Motion to approve.
Support.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Who did we have supporting that? I heard two people.
Roger.
Roger.
Motion by Brinker, supported by Jones, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two, we have the approval to hire Samantha Kerr to Animal Shelter Coordinator position.
Support.
Motion by Allen, supported by Jones, any discussion? Any questions for Ms. Kerr, she's in the audience. I'm putting her on the spot. All right, your last chance to get out.
Welcome to Brownstown and thank you for, thank you for choosing to work here.
If this will pass.
Looking forward to, yeah.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, welcome Samantha. Next, we have the clerk's report. Board information.
Motion to read and file.
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Motion for the treasurer's report, if I can find it. Um. I should have followed Jeff's advice for the little hamburger. Um. Treasurer's report is the amount of dispersments for February 20, or February 3rd, 2025 in the amount of $1,529.1549.
Motion to approve the dispersments for February 3rd, 2025.
Support.
Support.
Roll call vote?
Jones?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Killian?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes. Community Service Department, no report. Recreation, no report. Public Works, no report. Manager update, no report. I'm kidding. Mr. Peters, Township Manager, would you like to add to this by meeting?
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items. First of all, we've talked about some of these things several times, but just to provide an update. First, our master plan process, as the board is well aware, is ongoing. The current draft plan is available on our website. It is open to public review. That public review period lasts until March 3rd. As part of that, we are hosting a open house, which will be on Thursday, February 13th, from 4:00 PM until 7:00 PM at the Brownstown Event Center on King Road. We're getting a lot of good feedback so far on the draft plan and just looking forward to being able to see residents, community stakeholders at this open house, continue to get good feedback so that we can get a final plan together and get that presented to our planning commission and keep the process moving forward. Additionally, our, an update on our community center renovation. Last Friday was the bid closing date for the construction of this renovation project. We received eight very competitive bids, which we were happy to see the participation in that. We're currently in the process of working with our consultant to review those. We'll be setting up some interviews of those contractors that are some of the top firms that we're looking at and obviously, once we're, we have a chance to digest all of that, recommendation will be made to this body. We're hoping to have something together by the next meeting so that we can have a contractor that's on board and continue to move this project forward. So that's an ongoing process. Additionally, and this is something we haven't dealt with in a while, we have a current cellphone tower that is in the back of the police department. We've been in the middle of a 30-year lease on that tower that ends in 2029. From time to time, we'll get, we'll be contacted by different companies looking for locations for cell towers. But in this case, the lease rates in the area for these cellphone towers have gone up pretty significantly since we entered into the agreement we're in now. I have begun meeting with the company that currently is, that we're leasing, leasing it to, to discuss what kind of rates they'd be looking at if we wanted to extend it. There could be an advantage to us to talk now with the rates being up. And so we're discussing that now. If we're able to get some kind of good rates that come back in an extension of their lease agreement would be to the township's advantage, bring that back to the board. Otherwise, we can always wait until 2029 and start from scratch on it. But there could be an opportunity to have additional revenue coming into the township. So we're at least beginning discussions on that. With that in mind, I'm happy to answer any questions.
If I may ask a question, I can't go through the Mr. Peters, would we break that lease? I mean, would we be charged for breaking the lease or how does that work?
I don't think they would charge us for breaking the lease if it was with the same company.
What if we would choose another company?
If, I mean, we could always choose another company, we would just have to wait another four years until the end of the lease.
So is it the current company that has approached us?
So that's, so that's really, when I say it could be to our advantage, it's that the company that currently, we're currently leasing it to knows that the agreement's up in four years.
Oh, okay.
So there could be an opportunity to extend it now and keep some good terms. If not, we're not able to reach that, then in four years, as the lease is coming up, we could go out and do a, some kind of process to identify somebody else. But, you know, I've seen a number of communities look at these and sometimes you get within a few years of the expiration of the agreement and it can be a win-win for the company leasing it as well as for the community. So we've begun those discussions and see where we end up.
Great, thank you, I missed that step. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Peters. At this time, I would request a roll call for a closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268 1C to consider collective bargaining negotiations update for TPOAM Administrative Union. Motion by Allen, supported by Eberth, roll call vote?
Eberth?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Chapman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Breeze?
Yes. Seeing supervisors' conference room.
If you're tired of looking for a job and want a career, you're searching the staff. Elite Diversity Staff, and that's what we are, multiple offices to provide a better service and we specialize in wide range of coverage. So call us today to get your life in a new trajectory and welcome to Elite Diversity Staff. A mobile 24/7 call, 855-354-8365. That's 855-354-8365. What would you be doing if your pain wasn't swelling you now? I've had a couple of kids that go to the county here and I asked myself about pain questions a few years ago. I've been dealing with chronic pain since I retired from the NHL. I tried other surgery, injections, medication, none of it worked. Then I found Pain Free Life Centers and everything changed. Their exclusive high-intensity, high-益肤质 therapy got my pain under control when nothing else would. And what am I doing now that I'm free from pain? Well, how about a love my hockey or even golf? I've taken bumps in the wrestling ring and that's all thanks to Pain Free Life Centers. What they do works with no drugs, no injections, no surgeries and no side effects. They're so confident in what they do, your consultation and first treatment are free. You have nothing to lose about your pain. Stop letting pain tell you what you can and can't do. Take control of your life, go Pain Free Life Centers right now. 248-879-1100 or visit PainFreeLifeCenters.com. Someone had a birthday.
Yep, fifty, can't believe it.
Fifty years of wisdom.
Very sacred, we have hope, we have CDC updates.
Mucococcal vaccination is now recommended for adults fifty or older. Says here, we're over six times more likely to hospitalize with mucococcal pneumonia than adults under fifty.
I don't love those comments.
Say, I'm a pro athlete, Pfizer's brand of dummies is proven to help protect adults against mucococcal pneumonia and invasive mucococcal disease. It's just one dose and millions have already gotten.
Continued approval may depend on a supportive study. Won't be prefer twenty if you have a severe allergy to its ingredients. A weakened immune system may worry your response. Common suspects include injection site pain and swelling, teeth, headache, muscle and joint pain. For full prescribing information, please call 1-855-213-2138. Visit PerpetualTwenty.com or talk to your doctor or pharmacist. I'm on PerpetualTwenty.com now, scheduling my appointment.
Here I am, and that's the difference.
It's not just a damn issue. It's a warm blanket. It's a bottle of clean water. It's a room and a bed.
It's not like someone cares.
It's being safe.
Is it today that's better than yesterday?
Every dollar you can spare costs so much more than you can imagine. It's only a little, it's a little bit, 25% of California's office, or it's part of your need.
Go to redcross.org.
Hi, I'm Tamara from DTE's Community Engagement Board. Times are a devil, but we're working hard to keep your energy affordable. But while DTE is investing in grid updates to reduce outages 30% and cut restoration times in half by 2029, we're also committed to keeping bills below the national average. But if you do need help, please contact DTE for assistance. We're doing all we can to keep your energy reliable and affordable. DTE.
All this is sports, ready to get the Michigan sports fans come to talk. Sponsored by Elite Diversity Staff, Hudson Bell Ice Cream and University of Michigan Credit, Eberth. Here are your hosts, Lois Brown and Anthony Bolino. Welcome back here to Sports Draft, the great voice of the great 760 WJR. The fifth pick of the T K A P, the fan on, that is David Dale and the most dominant man, Anthony Bolino. It was a very, very busy weekend, a lot of stuff to learn. The Lions might not be playing in the Super Bowl. This up and down, which is disappointing for us all, but they did have a good showing in the program. Yesterday, the Trojan Lions scored by Jared Goff and started the game, won the offensive MVP, completed 10 of the 11 passes for 126 yards, three touchdowns, hitting the NFC off with fast stuff. Well, I'm happy, baby. Did we, AFC, you know, as you know, I don't watch that. I don't waste my time watching that game. Can't believe what a mockery it is. Yeah, man, that's just terrible, man, that's just terrible, the guys. It's not as bad as the NBA All-Star, but I'm telling you, man, hey, man, it's terrible. It's terrible, it's terrible. So, you know, I didn't watch much of it, I did see Jared throwing at the targets, I did see that. Of course, I seen Jameer with that speed on display. I think it was the handoff, the relay handoff, I seen him do that. And on the highlights, I seen Brian Branch get his interception. But maybe that's all the interest I have, probably pretty much picking it up on the replay. So, yeah, that's, look, I don't, I don't agree with you. I was, I was happy that our guys had a good showing. Jack Fox almost won the punt perfect competition. Jameer Gibbs had an interception in the end zone, so that was kind of like fun. I guess, no, yeah. That's what he did. Yeah, just running back picking off footballs in the end zone too. Good for him, but I'm kind of, anyway, these All-Star games are never going to be what we want them to be. Right, it's never going to happen. Football, we're a long ways away from Sean Taylor knocking out a punt. Oh, right. They'll never compete the way that we want them to. The NHL is having one this year because, you know, instead there are the four nations cup. The NBA, they're trying a million different things to make it at least somewhat entertaining. And for me, you can't beat the greatest of all time if you're afraid to compete with downtown competitions. So Zion, Ja, LeBron, all of them, everybody, Anthony Edwards, like what are we doing here? We got to go back to the basketball, I know, I know, man, you're right, it is bad. Maybe I look at football a little differently because in football, the worst thing you can do out there on the field is to go half-speed or not be fully engaged until a game because of the injury probability. But you lessen that probability in football when you go full-speed. You know, when you, you know, when you have, when you're trying to do at least half for full speed, you lessen the probability of getting hurt. Football is just so different than basketball or any of these other All-Star games. I just think it has to be played with a certain amount of intensity. And I guess that's why they shifted it to play football. But I, you know, it's just, it's just hard to watch these All-Star competitions now because you know the guys are giving the effort that you would like for them to. On the basketball side of things. He's drawing basketball. Now, I see a trend here because remember when the Pistons beat the Sacramento Kings, they fired Mike Drummond, right? I mean, that was kind of crazy. And then, you know, the Pistons, they'll go on and, you know, they'll beat the Dallas Mavericks and boom, there goes Rukicanshich, Atlanta Hawks and Udonis are on the dock. Now, Tuesday, Friday and yesterday, the Pistons this weekend won 72, opened fast, looked up in that ballgame. Won 27 to 11, the Kings proposed yesterday. Very, very pleased, but I have seen their 4-3 in their last seven. But the 30-second victory tonight, they went to Boston, a game two back. Yeah, the thing I like, what you talked, I'm sorry, dude, earlier in the interview, Sonja, you talked about how this team has come together, right? And the thing that impressed me the most over this weekend was when Jalen Duren got interviewed after the game and the praise that he was keeping on, K. Cunningham saying, they called him Miller, yep, I didn't know that. But he was saying how Melvin Miller really deserved to be a, to be a All-Star. You know, to be one of those guys, how he's been playing, how he's been leading that team and how the rest of them are following his lead. So, you know, just to hear your teammates say that about you, and it was unsensational. I mean, it was unsensational. So it's, it's just so refreshing to see. And you're right, it just seemed like this team really, really enjoys being around each other. Yeah, they did the season, enjoy being around each other. Passing both off, you're out of the chat. He left games, you know, you can't leave, eleven games in a row, which Jalen Duren has scored in double digits, the second longest streak of his career, his longest is 15 seasons. He had reported eight double-doubles in the span, averaging 14 points, 11 points rebounds, 24 points blocks, and that's eight in franchise history, 84 career double-doubles. And he's had the K. Cunningham, the seventh in the NBA, with 21 this season. The connection between K. and Jalen Duren has been just off the charts. You could see it growing. And for the first time this season, Jalen Duren completed a month of January averaging eight double-doubles. So congratulations to Jalen Duren. Yeah, I mean, Jalen Duren's success is discussion about the way that Jalen Duren has been playing. I mean, nothing but great games to say about how he's been playing. And you're right, he's taking this man and putting up the double. And you just see, he's a physical specimen at that young age, man, dude is built, man. I mean, yeah, he got the foundation, you know, he's not a slender guy, he has a beard to him. So, I mean, to be that young So, I mean, to be that young, to be built like that, man, we have some great years ahead of us. With Jalen Durin. Oh, I can't, I can't get enough of that. How about this, this is a 25 game, in which they better head out with 11 to 15 points. They're 24-4 in those games. And when they gain a lead of 16 or more points, they're foot-sitting in one. Not only has this team learned how to build a lead, they've learned how to sustain it and throw out baskets. Yeah, man, put that proverbial foot on the net. That's what they do, man. They leave no, you don't want to say the leave. They leave no chances for the team to come back, and that's been that killer instinct, AB showed. They've had sensation. Tonight's game is at 7 o'clock on Sanders Sports. Sticking on the hot room, it was Michigan State Spartans who fell 4-0 the weekend, 76-64 on Saturday. The USC closing to the 3-5 group, the 5-5, the first loss in conference play here for Michigan State, which was, I'm not here to sugarcoat it, it was a little bit of a surprise. And what I thought was really interesting about this was the fact that we had an opportunity, the coaching visa, to go 10-0 to start the big 10 season, which would have been the best start that he has ever had, the best start for the program. A 10-0, like, to begin conference play, that's insane. Plus, if he would have won it, he would have tied Bobby Knight back to 353 picks. Yeah, AB, the biggest thing that jumps off that is the free throw. I mean, again, Michigan State was 11, yeah, 11 of 19. And then you have USC at 15 of 19. So again, that made up your points right there. And what they did seem to be bad in all the other categories, look at assists. We out-assisted them, you know, we had more steals than they had. So again, it comes back to when you get those free throws, when you have the free throw line, you have to be able to make those. And I hated to see them get take this wrong, especially a team like USC that's already had eight losses. So that was a bad first. We'll be back in action tomorrow night at UCLA at 10 o'clock. Now, the Michigan Wolverines, they handle this this summer, 66-63 when this is against the Rutgers start tonight. So Michigan finds itself a half a game back in Purdue. Kentucky is nine wins in the conference, Michigan's eight to 21. Michigan State, 91 with a loss, so Michigan State has a half-game lead on Purdue, a one-game lead on Michigan, gave them both, he was sensational, 16 points, 14 rebounds, two assists, two steals, four blocks, I'm going, couple of foul plays. AB, AB, it could have been more. Oh, my gosh, man, I told you, man, I'm watching the game, and I'm like, feed the big men. Let the big man eat all of them. Those guys would be great post position old Rutgers, but they weren't touching the ball. And I just didn't understand that. Again, maybe a couple of times down the stretch, they start trying to give an end to the big guy. But to me, every time you go down, now, offensively, he should have really touched that ball. And I didn't see that with nothing, so that's one thing I'm a little disgusted at. I know he has to get back to the draw board, but that, how did he keep our big man engaged in the game? And you have to feed him the ball. Now, as for the Michigan Wolverines, they are back in action on Wednesday. They have a midweek Big Ten shooting day starting at 6:30. I don't, I don't, Michigan does check in at 24 in the Associated Press Top 25. Michigan State, that response, down to 25. Now, over the coolest game on ice this weekend, Big Donkey got forward to Detroit Red Wings. Last night, Alex Brinkett started things off, got his 22nd goal of the season in the first period. That tied the game at 1-1, at one goal apiece, because of course it was worth passing five minutes. But then Ben Shirock later in the second, with the 2-1 advantage for the Wings, they don't play their team this game, they give up on goal in the third period to tie 2-2. And with 42 seconds remaining in overtime, Alex Brinkett again, the pass of Lucas Raymond was sensational. You know, three-on-three, so they're opening up, and you got Brinkett screaming on that left wing. And then Mo Sider in the middle, and Mo cut in front of Lucas Raymond as the Brinkett gave the pass to Raymond. Almost like a screen, the Ray White. You know, Alex Lyon, he had a pretty good game. Again, he had 27 shots at, and you say 25, but it's compared to the Vancouver. Only, he only had 18 shots that he had to defend off. So AB, again, I would love to see us get that shot shot up, get more shots on that. The 18 of them for the game, you could never set enough about Alex Lyon. I'd say the way he stirred up in there, saving 25 out of 27 shots. So again, let's just be aggressive, and I know that's what Coach McCollum is speech. Now, that was the second game of a back-to-back, so they win Saturday, 3-1 at Cal State. Win yesterday, 3-3 at Old Town, the St. Louis, and off tonight with Seattle tomorrow night at 10 o'clock. Tug of the draft, a step aside, we'll be joined by former Detroit Pistons, bench first on offense, Dray Casey. We will return you on Sports Wrap. Listen up, well, WJR listeners, the time to start estate planning is now. So Estate Planning Legal Services are pleased to offer a complimentary estate planning at 4 telephones at eplsecc.com. Let's be honest, we never truly know, but tomorrow's free. So Estate Planning Legal Services offers the simplest way to guarantee your assets and property will be distributed according to your wishes. So that's for all of you JR listeners, need to call Estate Planning Legal Services at 248-425-0400. That's 248-435-0400. Or the telephone number's a bit easier, just visit eplsecc.com. EPLS prepares comprehensive planning packages to manage and protect your family. Receive your complimentary estate planning and set your open map with locally-based estate planning legal services at 248-435-0400, or visit eplsecc.com. That's 248-435-0400, or visit eplsecc.com. Plans are tomorrow, today, Estate Planning Legal Services. Something wonderful is happening to Club Keno from the Michigan Lions. There's the newly improved kicker, bigger Jack Fox from the Jack, and more chances for match and win with Plus 30. Seems everything costs more these days, gas, groceries? And when's the last time you took wireless bills? Yikes. When it comes to big wireless, if you're staying, you may be overpaying. Switch to Consumer Cellular if it's new, fast, reliable, nationwide coverage without the big wireless bill. Plans start at just $20 a month, and that's not a short-term promise. But don't just take our word for it. Here's Jackie Bronson, real customers. I didn't know that I could get something for a lot less money. That was absolutely better than what I was expecting for. Anytime anybody complains about their stuff, and they'll keep saying you gotta take out consumer cellular. Our US-based app, first and get you switched and saving without 20 minutes. Just call or click to see how much you can save today. Because when it comes to the wireless, if you're staying, you may be overpaying. Call 1-888-CREAM or visit consumercyler.com. That's 1-888-CREAM or consumercyler.com today. Real people pay to share their opinions in this app, and it provides our readers with all the pain they even have. Hey, first one up here, can consider this your invitation to join me on the Malphite Podcast. There is simply nothing quite as picture perfect as the Malphite Podcast, and we're traveling in style with the best tour operator in Italy, conservative tourists, the Fable Isle of the First, Positron, Insolento, all in the Bay of Mexico. Each minor investment will incorporate not just the wine, but tons of speech of regional delicacies, too. The Aviabont Casino, all about its destruction by olive bombers during the war. The secrets of ancient content, magical material, olive oil production, mozzarella phone, tasting sessions, and more. The cost, $55.67, connect with the jury of branch bucks. Support toll-free now, 887-33949, or visit conservativetourists.com. We'll see Italy's best captain for food, short and deep, an unparalleled cuisine by so many Italians, with their vacations included. In its picturesque, unstrung, and authentically accounted. And I'll see you on a high-speed jet boat. Great listeners, that happens Sunday at 8 a.m. with JR Sunday with Mark Hoppus. Great interviews and conversations all in one place on JR Sunday with Mark Hoppus. Sponsored by Prime, your payroll and HR solution. To learn more, to reach out to Prime, or go to www.lionprime.com. It's not just a donation. It's a warm blanket. It's a bottle of clean water. It's a roof and a bed. Please donate now to help people affected by the 2025 California wildfires. Go to Red Cross Goddard. The Super Bowl is on the line. Save your seat on WJR. The Philadelphia Eagles, the Kansas City Chiefs, we hand you coverage. It's the first kickoff. Now, let us bring you the final battle this Sunday. Coverage begins at 2:00, kickoff at 6:30. Super Bowl 59, don't miss a single play on 760 WJR. This is Sports Wrap, where Michigan sports fans come to talk. Sponsored by Elite Diversity Staff, Hudsonville Ice Cream, and University of Michigan Credit Union. Here are your hosts, Lomas Brown and Anthony Bolino. Welcome back here to WJR, the great voice of the great length, 760 WJR, and the Big Ten 50W, TK8 in Ann Arbor. That is the all-star of the Lions legend, the Super Bowl champion of the '75, Lomas Brown. I am Anthony Bolino. And joining us now, he was named in 2017, 2018, NBA Coach of the Year. Spent five years at the helm of your Detroit Pistons. His name is Dray Casey, and Coach Casey, first of all, I gotta, I can't call you Dray, all right? I, as long as you guys are in the same demographics, I can go with Mr. Casey or I can go with Coach. Because that's the term of the year, man, that's what my parents raised it.
Coach is great. Coach is, I always loved the coach, I was, AB, I, I told him, man, I said, man, once you're a coach, you're all living in a coach's room. That is the term, man, here, man. This is, uh, this is your question, Robert.
Beautiful. So Coach Casey, the boys are, they're really playing right now. I mean, they, they look like they have found themselves in a stride right now. Where, you're fully out in the season, maybe they were trying to figure out some ways to win games, or maybe not lose them if they have a lead. This team, this young corps, they have figured it out with some veteran leadership. As you look down at them on game nights from your position, how have you seen that growth over time when it takes place from this point?
Well, it's got to change. His growth is unbelievable. And before JB got hurt, he was physical, had made a few steps forward. Jayden Durin's step has made a step forward. Isaiah Stewart has stepped in his position of being a five. He was trying to get offensive for the game, and he was trying to stay in the core. His natural position is a more fair five, which he should take by him. He can have a long career doing it. So kudos to JB for selling more that. And all those factors together, Anthony, has led to those guys being, and then the job that, that, Trajan, Ben, and Tobias, that, bringing in, Luis, bringing in Tim Hardaway, June. Those three players were the perfect veterans to bring to the team. Lomas, you, you probably saw those type of veterans coming into the Lions. You can bring in veterans, but sometimes if you bring in the wrong veterans, they keep going. Are they not the right veterans? Is it not the right mix? These three young men have the perfect mix for KB, Jalen, and Jayden to go with them, to provide leadership, the chemistry, where they use the basketball, what they can do defensively. They all picked together, and kudos to Trajan for putting that piece together and forming that chemistry. Like you said, Anthony, they took me about it during the season, from the jail, and JB and his staff did a great job of creating camaraderie, creating a toughness of the defensive end. You know, they're, they're all offensive players, they're hard, their DNA is offensive players. But he did a good job of coming in and really, really getting that buy-in to the defensive end. Because the game has changed. The days of, you know, to stop them every possession, to keep you under 80 points, those days are gone. So if you can't keep the scoreboard moving, or when that first edge, you can't get it stopped, but you keep the scoreboard moving to the other end, that's so important in today's NBA.
Yeah, Coach, I, I, you hit it right on the head. You know, I want to talk more about JB Baker's staff and his staff, what they came in and what they've done. Because, Coach, we're looking at it, and I'm not trying to pile on what you talked about, Lucas Doncic. And they talk about how he would be getting shamed, and you had other things coming out of Dallas about what he wouldn't do. But yet still, you see the guys here, how they all in to what Coach Baker's staff is preaching, what he's saying, but what the message that Coach Baker's staff, it has to be a precise message that he's getting close to these guys because it's resonating with these guys.
No question. He's a great communicator, but it, it talked with the thought, you know, you gotta have the right roster, the right personalities, the right peers to get together, guys. And right now, a change where he is in his career, where I be in his career, where Jared is in his career, I saw, everybody on the team, they have the right project careers to live. And they did their best with a great job of communicating, articulating the goals and what guys' goals are, and they have followed it to their goal. But it wouldn't happen if you don't, if you got, you know, if you don't have the right people. And you put the people, and JB has done a good job of connecting them together. Uh, you know, in today's day, you got to have shooters, and JB's done a great job of bringing those shooters in and getting them to perform on the defensive end. And also the relief, if you've noticed, and as you mentioned, early in the season, I don't know if guys really could beat, if they got the hype of, think the first group, whether they could, could down.
A motion for returning from closed session?
Motion to return from closed session.
Support?
Support.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Jones. Roll call vote, please.
Breeze?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Chapman?
Yes.
Brinker, yes. Killian?
Yes.
Eberth?
Yes.
And then I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement as presented in closed session.
Support.
Motion by Eberth, supported by Killian.
No.
Um.
Jones.
Jones, sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we have no board awareness. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Chapman, supported by Killian. Um, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a great evening.